Good afternoon or good evening. The meeting is called to order at 5:30 PM. Maya, can you establish the quorum?
Yes. Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Kobo Smith.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha.
President Hernandez.
All right, so closed session items. We have A. Government Code Section 54-957.6. Agency Designated Representatives. B. To B. Conference with Labor Negotiator. C. Conference with Labor Negotiator. D. Conference with Labor Negotiator. E. Conference with Labor Negotiator. F. Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. G. Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation. Significant Exposure to Litigation. And H. Government Code Section 54-957. Public Employee Discipline Dismissed or Released Complaint. We will now go to recess to close session.
All right, I'm calling the meeting back to order at 7:22 PM. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Maya, can you reestablish the quorum?
Yes. Trustee Brown.
Present.
Trustee Kobo Smith.
Present.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha. President Hernandez.
Here. Item 3B, reports from closed session. There's nothing to report. Item C, flag salute. Trustee Lathan, can you lead us in the flag salute?
Our president's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is item 3D, the land acknowledgement. So Antioch Unified School District acknowledges that we gather on the unceded ancestral homelands of the Bay Mewoc people. As guests, we humbly extend our gratitude to the Bay Mewoc elders and community. We recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland, and we affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples. As the original stewards of this land, the Bay Mewoc understand the interconnectedness of all things and the importance of maintaining harmony with nature. Likewise, Antioch Unified School District commits to teaching our school community how to be responsible stewards of this land. Moving on to 3E, approval of the May 21st, 2025 regular board meeting minutes. Unless there's any discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I move to approve. A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the May 21st, 2025 regular Board of Education meeting minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to item F, approval of the June 11th, 2025 regular board meeting minutes. I'll again entertain a motion unless there's discussion.
I move to approve.
A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting of June 11th, 2025. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. And then lastly, item G, approval of the June 25th, 2025 regular Board of Education meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I move to approve. A second.
So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the June 25th, 2025 regular Board of Education meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to superintendent's report. So I'll go ahead and pass it off and give a warm welcome to our superintendent, Dr. Darnice Williams.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Hernandez. Thank you. I am super proud and excited to be here. I always say excited because I am. And to bring you the report, the superintendent report, my first report, August 13, 2025. And here we go. And so my tenure here in Antioch started with just welcome back to school. We had an awesome time. We started off with convocation, and that is bringing staff together, our classified and our certificated staff together, just to learn a little bit about their new superintendent and also the vision and background about from me, by me. And then also, just to set the tone, hearing from the board president, also from former students, and giving us a chance to start our partnership and collaboration on a high note, while also recognizing some of the awesome and amazing things that are happening within our community. In addition to welcoming all of our parents and staff members and community members back to the '25-'26 school year, we kicked off with what is called the Magic School Bus Tour. And the Magic School Bus Tour was our opportunity, myself, cabinet, along with our trustees, to visit as many schools as possible. You're going to hear from them later in today's meeting. And we were able to visit eight campuses in addition to MNO and also transportation. And we just wanted them to know that we welcome them, we are aligned with them, and we want the best not only for our students, but also for our staff to ensure that we are all successful. And as in my message, we are one, and the only way for us to maintain that success is if we work together. So it was really great to meet a lot of parents and students and also principals and help where we could. And then also, just to list, I even took a pop quiz with trustee Rocha. There is a photo where I looked very shocked, and then I had a student remind me that, as a superintendent, I know you're not shocked. And so it was really a good opportunity to get into the community in an informal fashion to hear about, excuse me, things that are going well, and then also to get some feedback. In addition, we were working, I've been working with our labor partners, and we're starting off really good, trying to maintain that relationship, and we're going to continue on that trajectory in terms of our communication. I'm wondering why my slides are not going, but I hope they do. There are lots of pictures here. In addition, there was a meet and greet hosted by the NAACP, and that started off on Saturday, August 5th at 5:00 PM, at Delta Bay Church. And it was an awesome opportunity, again, to connect with members of residents in Antioch, some of our students. I heard lots of things about Antioch Unified School District. Some were great, and then some were opportunities for us to do better. And so we receive all feedback because that's only going to help us grow together. I was also joined, and thank you very much, by trustee Lathan and also trustee Brown and her baby. So thank you very much. You can see our picture. Next up. And so with that, we have a slide with some celebrations on there. Just wanted to lift the celebrations in our district among the good things. We have a number of grants that were brought in, and kudos to the staff and ed services and the staff who was able to apply for these grants and bring money into the district. We are always looking for alternative ways to fill in the funding gap, and so we are very proud and excited for those efforts, and we will continue on that trajectory in looking for alternative ways for us to find additional resources, fiscal resources, as well as staff and then also material. We had our staff development. It was awesome. We had Dr. Cruz, who was our keynote. He inspired all of us. He is with Learning Tree, and he was able to speak to us regarding our PLC work. We are excited that we had over 100 teachers and administrators participate in a summer institute and really do a deep dive in terms of learning about professional learning communities to extend the learning from prior years. And so we will see Dr. Cruz will return in January 2026. He has given us that charge to make sure that we remember that we are professional educators, all of us, with the job to go out, and we are breaking the cycle of poverty. He was more eloquent in his presentation in saying that, but you get the message. Our classified team, we were excited. We were able to meet with them. And again, as I mentioned, we had a chance not only to have convocation with our classified staff as well, we were able to visit MNO, which was really important, and then also our van drivers and our bus drivers as well to give them support. And we also took donuts. So you see our picture there. And then what was really, really cool, I thought, is you see the picture to the right. We visited Antioch High School, and at the time, this was the freshman orientation. And during the freshman orientation, which was high energy, all of the students that you see with the blue t-shirts, the tie dye, those are our upper-level students who were serving as leads and guides and mentors to our freshmen, incoming freshmen. And so we had a really good time, had an opportunity to address and welcome the freshmen of Antioch High School. And they seemed like they were a little tentative, but you know, they're ready for the year because, as you can see, they had a huge amount of support in surrounding them and ready to welcome them into high school. And again, the Magic School Bus, but don't worry, if we didn't visit your school on August 15th, I'm sorry, the first week of school, we will be there on August 15th and August the 22nd because we will visit each and every campus. And by the end of August, we would have had touchpoints with all 24 sites, in addition to our nutrition and food services department as well. Super excited. Student voice is very important. We are now accepting applications for students to join the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee. I am welcoming all students who are interested in joining to also serve alongside of the to-be-selected or elected student board members. And we are going to have a great time because these particular students are going to be my guide. They are going to let me know from the student perspective how we are doing. They will be able to grade us, provide feedback, and then also work alongside of us in terms of community service. So looking very much forward, the information has gone out to our school leaders. I've even asked students personally to apply, so I'm looking forward to really engaging with our scholars so that they understand that they too are advocates for themselves and for their peers. Here's the grant information that I spoke of earlier. As you can see, lots and lots of funding coming in, and we're very proud of our learning communities, for Community Schools Partnership Program, Golden State Pathways Program, Strong Workforce Grant, Restorative Practice Grant, Restoring Peace and Reducing Harm, and then the California Academic Partnership Program. Antioch Unified High School, we are on the move. So what are the plans? Here's the 2025, 2026 entry plan for your new superintendent. And in this entry plan, of course, here are all my bosses, who I work alongside and take direction from. I have included a letter each and every member of our community should have been in receipt of this communication. And basically, the idea here is to outline what are my actions as I enter into and learn about Antioch Unified School District. And so I have established goals, and the goals are just not mine, they're our goals. And these goals are based on the stakeholder feedback that was given once during the selection process, and also from interviews and communication with board members, community members, school leaders and such. So you can see the five goals that are going to guide my listening tour as I learn more about Antioch Unified School District. It's working with my board, also looking at continuing academic excellence, how we can grow, effective student-centered decision-making and voice, analyze and address critical issues that stand as barriers to accelerating performance for all students, and making sure that we are engaging at high levels with family, community, and we increase our public relations, getting out, telling the good stories and the good things that are happening within Antioch Unified School District. There is tracking the progress. How will we know that we know? And so here is how the metrics will be used in order for me to report to the public and also to our board of trustees if in fact I've met these goals together. So in progress, very appropriate, we have apples, one apple is in progress. If we're advancing the work and we're just not there and we've not completed it by January, don't worry, we have until June. It would be advancing with two apples. And then complete, we check off complete, and those tasks or actions will be completed, will be represented by three apples. The mission, the purpose of the pre-entry plan is available. Next. Next. And here are the actions prior to my start with Antioch Unified School District. I was able to meet with the board president and trustees to clarify and validate observations, holding one-on-one meetings with cabinet members, some principals, and site leadership teams to learn more about my roles, their roles and responsibilities and district priorities and initiatives, and then also scheduling ongoing meetings with the then interim superintendent to ensure a smooth transition of leadership. Immediate actions, again, host of meetings with community folk, scheduling listening sessions so I can introduce myself. I have several meetings that are scheduled, sites will see me, I will be very visible. I do have a schedule. And then also, one of the actions which has been fulfilled is bullet number three or point number three, immediately recruit and associate superintendent of Human Resources to fill the existing vacancy. Deliverables, as you can see, mid-year, I will have a full report in terms of my learnings and with data and also with recommendations, particularly focusing on our academic program and looking at our services and reviewing our services for our students who qualify for special education services. Again, a review of the goals. These are the actions. Within each goal, there are specific actions tailored to make sure that we are able to collect the information needed. And from there, there are a set of questions that your new superintendent will be asking around each goal so that I have clarity. You can keep going through those. So the format is the same to align to each goal. You can see the actions and then also the questions that I will be asking, community, students, administration, everyone who's a part of our school district. Focusing on our students as well, listening to them, also making sure that we see all of them, that we hear them, and that we hold space for their learning and also hold space for their well-being. And that each decision that we make, that we continue to keep our student needs at the center. And then number five, as you can see, four, is engaging with community. We want to bring our families back. We want to ensure that Antioch Unified School District is the first choice when selecting a school for our students and for families to select the school, that Antioch Unified School District will be the first choice. So we're going to bring our students back, those who have chosen to go to other school districts. We want to do an assessment, make sure that we're going out in the community and saying, what are the good things about Antioch Unified School District? And what are some things that you would like for us to continue doing? And what are some things that we would need to do in order to become equally attractive as some of the others, districts that some of our parents have selected? I've been in communication with our county office superintendent. We will have ongoing meetings, looking forward to building those relationships along with expanding relationships with other members of our community. And there you have it. And so it's been a full month. I have survived. I am still smiling, and we're going to continue to move forward in excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. And in the spirit of continuing this great welcome to our back-to-school, our next item is under School Reports, is Item A, a back-to-school update. So I'll turn it back over to the superintendent and staff to introduce that item and share a little bit about the back-to-school experience.
Thank you again, President Hernandez. And so as mentioned, student voice is important, also feedback from our parents and our leaders and our community members. So during our Magic School Bus Tour for our first eight schools and our two offices or two divisions, we wanted to make sure that we're receiving an update about the experience in returning school from the voices directly from our primary sources, our students, our administrators, also some parents and some of our employees. So next what we have is a presentation. We have eight principals here who will be presenting, and then also we have our students who will be presenting and even our parents. And so we want the board and the community just to see from different perspectives and also our feedback. I just want to hear firsthand from those individuals. And so we can begin. Turner Elementary.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jessica Stone, and I'm the principal at Turner Elementary. And we were lucky to have the first stop on the Magic School Bus Tour, which everybody got to see the beautiful car line as they arrived right at our drop-off time. So you can see some pictures that we have from the very first day of school, including the beautiful poster we got from the board. Thank you very much. It's hanging in our office, reminding everybody what we're here to do each and every day. And it puts a smile on my face when we get to walk by it. Our scholars and staff had an amazing start to the school year. We were able to bring in some really happy, smiley faces with our four-year-olds and TK getting to start their first school experience and moving up through the age through the fifth graders who are the top dogs on campus right now. They were excited to share everything that happened over summer, all the wonderful things that they did, and come see the new spaces that they were able to enjoy that were decorated with everyone just so excited to share their new spaces and excited to learn as we head into this new year. Our school campus looked amazing. Our custodial staff had worked so hard over the summer that one of the classes even made our custodians some thank you cards because they were so impressed with how things looked. And that always means so much to them because a lot of their work goes unseen. We had our school-wide meeting to go over our rules, and we always like to talk about being kind, safe, and responsible at Turner. Those are our three school rules. And our falcon there is Finn, the friendly falcon. We know falcons aren't always friendly, but ours is because in elementary school, we really want to make sure to make those rules stick and to teach them that positive way to communicate with one another and keep their academics in a positive growth mindset. I didn't have any scholars come with us today. My one family who was going to join us had to cancel at the last minute, but we are looking forward to sharing as the year continues. I can't wait until we get to decorate this beautiful space that looks pretty empty right now. And thank you so much for coming by and having the wonderful visit. We really had a great time. I can't thank you guys enough for helping at Carline. I had all kinds of extra helpers, which were really great. So thank you so much.
All right, John Muir Elementary.
Good evening, Board Superintendent Williams. Thank you for having us here tonight. So to kind of quickly go over our first day, I'll probably leave it more to Lucia here, one of our students that are joining us. But we had over 670 students that entered our gates. We had an arts balloon that was decorated by one of our parents in the morning. When I got there, they were decorating early, and I was kind of blown away by that. And that's not all the students that were supposed to come, but of the students that came, we had over 670 students, and we thankfully got them all to the class and with a lot of your help. So very thankful for the board and superintendent and cabinet for pitching in and helping getting those students to the class. We had all staff on desks, teachers, classified, everyone was helping getting the students to class, making sure they got there safely, and to the correct teacher. We had some teachers, some kids, they went to the wrong class, but we got them into the right class. We had TK Kinder Orientations in the morning with parents. That was virtually online. And then after that, we invited those parents to come in for school tours because you want to have that nice, easy handoff, like for the first time, these kids are going to school, and we want to make sure it is a welcoming, warm place for them. Teachers were able to welcome students to the classroom and really begin procedures. And to be honest, like this last week, we've seen just kids are really already gearing in with academics, following procedures, and it's really coming together very nicely this first week, and I hope it continues. But I think you want to hear more from Lucia, who is one of our DI students, and so she will be presenting to you both in Spanish and in English. So.
Hola, mi nombre es Lucia Roman, y estoy en quinto grado DI. Este es mi sexto día de escuela, y yo he tenido mucho diversión. Hacemos proyectos sobre nosotros mismos para conocer a compañeros en clase. Tenemos tres objetos este año que todos queremos alcanzar. Tres de mis objetos son leer en español, aprender a pronunciar los países y estados en español, también escribir en español con claridad. Yo pienso que mi escuela es el mejor lugar para aprender en el mundo porque nosotros tenemos hechos interesantes y tengo muchos maestras y maestros interesantes. Hello, my name is Lucia Roman. I'm in fifth grade DI. This is my sixth first day of school, and I have a lot of fun. We do projects about ourselves to get to know the people in class. We have three goals this year we all want to achieve. Three of my goals is reading fast in Spanish, learning how to pronounce the countries and states in Spanish, also writing Spanish easier. I think our school is the best place to learn on earth because we learn interesting facts and have amazing teachers.
Thank you, Board.
Black Diamond Middle. This is where I took the pop quiz. And here's that student right here.
Mom, can we have you join us? Come on, Ms. Williams. I'm at the whole key. Okay. Good evening, Board President Hernandez, Board Trustee Superintendent Williams. I'm Dr. Buffico, the proud, proud principal of Black Diamond Middle School. And I have my team here. And so I want to go ahead and begin with Josiah. He's going to share with you his first day at school.
Good morning. My name is Josiah Rendon, and I go to Black Diamond. Good evening. My name is Josiah Rendon, and I go to Black Diamond Middle School. And the first day was a little weird because it was a big change from elementary, that had sixth grade, to a middle school that there was a whole, it was a whole different format. And all the switching, the teachers were very welcoming, especially the principal and vice principal. And all of the questions you had, they were very happy to answer. All of, like, if you needed help finding a class, they were also very happy to answer. There was a bunch of site safety principal and Dr. Jones, Dr. Buffico, and a lot of the site safeties were out helping you get to your classes and during the passing periods and making sure you weren't late. And during first period, our board meeting came, our board leaders came in and took the pop quiz with us. I lent most of them pencils and paper.
So sorry, we were so unprepared, Josiah. We appreciated you though.
And that's all.
Thank you. Hello, good evening. My name is Stacia. This is my lovely son, Josiah. I have my husband here and my family and my dad. I've been very proud and honestly excited for him starting middle school. It was a different change for him, you know, changing six periods, and he was kind of nervous but excited over everything. I agree with him. Everyone has been very welcoming and supportive, and I just am happy and excited for him to go through the school year with Black Diamond.
That was a pop-up here.
Well, Mom, I would just like to say that I'm so grateful that Josiah kept us on point. He made sure we had pencils, he made sure we paid attention, and he reminded us, he said, well, do you need a piece of paper? And all three of us needed paper. And he also made sure we paid attention during the pop quiz. So we thank you so much for setting an example of a model student for your superintendent and board members. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Ms. Williams. She is our ticket Black Diamond Middle School. She's our teacher, but our teacher in charge as well.
Good evening. I've been at Black Diamond for 10 years. And this, this time, the first day of school didn't feel like the first day of school. The kids came in, they knew the expectations. It was wonderful, but I have to say, the principal went and visited all the elementary schools, so the kids knew the expectations when they came in. So it felt like they had been there all that time. It was smooth. The kids were really in a very calm mode, and I enjoyed it. It's been that since day one, it hasn't changed. It was great.
Thank you. And I just have to say, it was, it was a wonderful start to the school year. We are always happy to see our students. I mean, we're jumping for joy. We opened our doors the day, but the night before school opened so the kids could bring their schedules and find their classes so they knew where to go on the first day. For those students who were not able to come to visit to find their classrooms, we had our Girl Empowerment students there, welcoming them at the gates and taking them one-on-one to find their classrooms before the start of school. But I have to tell you, something was very different this year that I've been an administrator for, this is going on 26 years now, and what I have never experienced, the number of board members who are present and our superintendent and our assistant superintendent on the first day of school, and that filled my heart. You did not just do drive-bys into classrooms. You went, you sat down, and you engaged with our teachers, you engaged with our students, and you engaged with our classified staff, and I appreciate you. They appreciate you so very much. And Ms. Dr. Williams, I already see the teacher in you. I see the teacher in you, and you provided us the first lesson, bell-to-bell instruction, the bell does not dismiss- The bell does not dismiss the students, the teacher dismisses the student. So, sit still. But I have to just, and I'm going to go because I know we're gone on, but I have to say, Board President Hernandez, during the professional development, you touched so many hearts. You touched so many hearts. And I promised my staff that I would reach out to you because we want to invite you to our site to share your story with our English learners. We want them to take pride in the work that they're doing because just like Lucia, being bilingual is going to open so many doors for them. And unfortunately, not all of our students understand that they need to take this with pride and learn the second language and not to forget their first language. So, I'm hoping that you will be able to come over and speak with our students. So, my teachers are going to bombard you with emails, so just be prepared.
No, I'm happy to go over and happy to talk with students anytime.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate you.
All right, Transportation. And as a result of our visit, your superintendent will be riding along with some of our bus drivers. And I want to experience what they experience on a daily basis so that we could continue to provide strategic and direct support.
Absolutely. Hi, good evening. I'm Nathaniel Hill, Nate Hill, Director of Transportation. And so tonight, it's just very basic for us, but it's interesting because the first day is, is always nervous for us as well because we spend so much time working on routing and trying to get all the students, you know, to the right places. And so the first day is almost like if you take a soda and shake it and you're, you know, waiting for it to like, you know, crack open and hopefully doesn't explode. And so Transportation is like that. We're hoping on the first day that, you know, all the students are transported safely to and from and to their right locations. And so for the most part, we did that. And so we're very successful with that. This year, we started out with 540 students. So, that's a huge increase over last year where we ended almost about this number. So, to start at this number was, was a tremendous challenge for us, but we were successful. And it was really nice having all of you with us as well on the first day. Everyone really enjoyed, you know, meeting you all and, and I hope that, you know, you can come out and ride the bus with everybody. They actually will really enjoy that. And I have to also say that my staff is amazing. They've done a great job in all their different positions. The drivers did a great job assisting each other. And so what brought, a person I brought today is one of my drivers, Paul. He just kind of want to outline what he.
For the first day, I've only been here for three months. So, the experience has been pretty, pretty overwhelming, you know, a lot, a lot of students, a lot of moving, a lot of moving parts. But being here first, seeing you guys the first time, I worked for Liberty School District and then I came on over here and it's been a pleasure. It's been really great. But yeah, moving the kids is awesome. It's fun. It's good. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you both do. And thank you for your leadership. Thank you. All right, Maintenance, M and O.
Good evening, President Hernandez, Trustees, Dr. Williams. It's great to see you guys again. I really appreciated you all coming out and bringing us donuts and meeting us in our maintenance yard. I can tell you heartfelt gratitude from all of our maintenance employees for the donuts. Every time they came in, they saw, like another one? Awesome, right on. They please thank them for me. So, making sure that we definitely extend the gratitude. As you know, summer is not a time without students anymore. So, all summer long, working hard to deep clean those rooms, work around our summer programs, make our repairs and our necessary fixes in those areas where we're able to get to without students. And we have about two weeks where we don't have students on campus. So, really that's our mad rush right before school starts to where we can make sure that our facilities are up and running and ready for our students to have just a great learning experience. I've had the pleasure of working with our Williams inspector. So, I don't know if you guys know, but we have every year a Williams inspection and I get to take part in our facilities portion of that. And so this year, COVID has actually increased the numbers all over Contra Costa County and all over the state of California. Contra Costa County actually has 134 sites that are now Williams sites as opposed to 74. And so our, our sites have gone up as well, which is great because we get to go and we get to walk all of these sites. And so we go through and we see any areas that might need improvements. We inspect to make sure that everything is good for our students. We want to make sure that our sites are equitable and that no matter what site we are at, that those students are receiving the same kind of care for their facilities. And so it's just been great working with him and seeing the progress that has been made. I walked with him about four years ago and we had about 750 work orders that I had to enter after our inspection. And each year, we progressively had less and less. We had 500 the year after that, about 380. It'll go up this year with our additional five sites. But we're just really happy to see our improvement in our facilities and making sure that our sites are just a wonderful place for our students to come and experience education in an environment that's conducive to learning for them. But thank you again and we look forward to seeing you in the maintenance office again.
Dozier Libby.
Good evening, Dr. Williams, Cabinet, and Board President Antonio Hernandez and Trustees. I appreciate you guys taking the time on the first day of school to visit us all the way out in the country of Antioch. And before I begin, I actually would also like to acknowledge the work that our custodians did over the summer. Our classrooms looked amazing. I was joking with the teachers that the floors were actually shinier than my head, which is a special feature because the teachers came in and they were all talking about how great their rooms look. So, want to highlight Allen and Marari's work. Our first day of school actually began with an adjusted day, which was the first time in recent years that we've had an adjusted day, which was intentional for teacher collaboration over the course of the school year. So, we are looking at Dozier Libby increasing our teacher collaboration time to, to talk about the projects and things that were going to be intentional about improving within our school community. And our day began at about 5:45 with the senior sunrise, which I'll have some of our students talk about. But I also wanted to introduce some of our young scholars who are the representatives of our school and our school, our student leaders. So, I have two of our members from the class of 2026. I have Gianni and Bethany. And from the class of 2029, one of our freshman student leaders, Abigail. And then we also have joined two of our staff members who are also a part of the Guiding Coalition at Dozier Libby, our senior teacher who also teaches our leadership class, Ms. Karkeek. And Vice Principal Lindsay Memory. So, I'd like to turn it over to Abigail.
Hi, my name is Abigail Savannah Murphy and I am honored to represent the freshman class of Dozier Libby Medical High School. When I first found out I was going to Dozier Libby Medical High School, I was horrified because it's high school and I heard, oh my gosh, I'm so short. Okay, hold on. Sorry. Okay. I was horrified because I heard it was very intimidating and strenuous and there was a lot going on. But on the first day, I was proven very wrong and so was everyone else. At this school and all these teachers, they saw potential in me that I didn't see in myself. Before I was even in eighth grade, one of the teachers, I think it was health teacher, Mr. McKean poured into me and encouraged me to follow my dream of following, of studying psychology and becoming a therapist. In that moment, he poured into me and he made me want to pour into others. He made me want to come alive and find my why. Shout out to my dad. I know this school, oh, sorry guys, I know this school will help me and I know it will help me complete my mission and I know it will help others too. Thank you so much.
And we have Bethany.
Hello, School Board Members. My name is Bethany Vumar and I'm honored to serve as both the leadership and host of president at Dozier Libby Medical High School. Walking into the first day of my senior year felt both exciting and surreal. Knowing this year would be my final chapter here, I'm eager to make the most of this year from building school spirit to engaging in future work-based learning experiences that will prepare us for our careers. And I look forward to creating lasting memories while continuing to represent our school with pride.
And Gianni.
Good evening to Dr. Superintendent Williams, to Board President Hernandez, AUST Cabinet, and then the rest of members of the Board. I appreciate you all being here and it means a lot to us. I'm currently a senior attending Dozier Libby Medical High School. And on August 6th, I participated in a long-held Dozier Libby tradition called our senior sunrise. This essentially entailed me and a bunch of my classmates, Queen Bethany and other members of our senior class, assembling on our, on our school's yard at 5:45 in the morning and then waiting to see a little yellow ball emerge at the end of the horizon. So, this was a really excellent experience and opportunity to, you know, connect with peers, you know, probe them on how their summers were, what their aspirations and plans were for the upcoming school year. And then besides that, it was a really great, really welcomed, fun experience, you know, at a school that prides itself on its rigorous and very valuable academics. Besides this, however, was also a really interesting introspective opportunity, which really allowed me to reflect on my past three years at Dozier. And then also was really welcomed realization that these past three years here aren't the end, that my life, my academic future is just beginning. And that when I leave the halls of Dozier Libby, the skills, the valuable skills and character development I achieved there will not. I appreciate the school. I appreciate you guys being here and the rest of the community being here. It means a lot and I'm very excited for what this new chapter in our district to come will be. Thank you.
Thank you guys for having us, Board Trustees, Dr. Williams, Cabinet. My name is John Jimno, Principal Antioch High School. This is my 40th first day of school in Antioch. Now, I'm not that old, but 12 as a student and 28th as a, as a employee and I think it's 17th as a principal. So, very exciting first day of school. I was actually, I emailed the staff early that morning and I thought, yeah, I always said a welcome out and I said, you know, I'm having butterflies right now, which is weird for the 40th time I've been doing this in this district. But every year you get butterflies, you're excited, you're excited with the new year brings. When I got to school that day, and I'm going to, I'm going to say this because I walked to the Link Crew at 8:30 this morning, in the morning. And I never felt more special in my life. I thought I was a superstar when I was, I was a Beatle. I thought, do I have hair and am I a Beatle now? Because it was crazy, the energy those kids brought. So, when the magic school bus showed up at Antioch High School about 11:30 that day, I think we were in one of the last stops. I said, we're not going to go to classrooms. I know what this, this woman wants right here. We're going to party. And we went to the party and we walked into the beatatorium and she was dancing with the kids and it was high energy and exactly what I wanted you to see at our school is the energy our leadership brought to that school, to those kids, to make sure when they got to school, they knew they were part of a community, they just weren't coming to a school anymore. That was our goal and I think they pulled it off really successfully. I got the coolest person in the world with me behind me right now. She is probably the coolest person I've ever met in my life, so I'm going to let her do more talking. But I want to say one thing, we all do senior sunrises, kind of a traditional thing we do. But the last picture there, we actually lost a student this, this summer in a tragedy. And one of the things that means a lot to me is that our school is not just a place for kids to learn, but it's a community that we support each other, not just the students there, but the families too. So, on Friday of the first week of school, we actually invited their family to come to the school campus and celebrate the life of their child with our students. And it was a really special moment that I'll remember forever. It was really a time when they got to celebrate, the family got to celebrate life with their, with their student, with their child's student friends. And it was really cool event and it was just very touching to watch the interaction between the students and that family and how they were supporting the family and she was supporting the students in a really hard time for them to deal with. So, not to make it a damper day, but it is important for us to remember that this isn't just a school, this is a community that we were involved in and that's how I treat it every day we go to work. Leila is the coolest person. She should talk more than me. I'll bring her up.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Leila Elliott. I'm a senior at Antioch High School. I'm a part of a multitude of different just community-based programs on campus and one of them is Link Crew. Link Crew, on the first day of school, we led our freshman orientation and that is what you saw. And it was just a very lively and exciting day for our students. We had a lot of our Link Crew, even leadership kids come in and we all wrapped our school with our tie-dye blue shirts. And we were just able to practice our leadership skills with leading the new incoming freshmen and giving them tours on campus, showing them like the places to eat lunch. And also resources that a lot of our teachers provide and we even just gave them advice on how it would be once they finally got to their senior year, like me. I just kind of want to compliment Mr. Jimno because when I came to high school, I didn't even think that I'd make it to my senior year. My high school journey has been very hard, but with the support that I've gotten from a lot of the teachers on Antioch High's campus, it's become one of the most amazing and beautiful aspects of just being a child growing up. I've been a part of a USD my whole life and just growing up, I went to Fremont Elementary, Mission Elementary, Antioch Middle School, Antioch Charter Academy, and now I'm at Antioch High. I've been to Deer Valley, Liberty, all them places in collaboration and it's really showed me the importance of community and what it means to be a true student that really cares about the people around you. And it's been great. I'm not ready to leave, but I am. But I will be always repping a USD on my back because I am proud of it. Thank you.
Live Oak.
Good evening, Board President Hernandez and Superintendent Dr. Williams. My name is Christina Frameth. I am the proud principal of Live Oak High School. And I have here with me today, one of my amazing teachers, Casey Graham. And overall, our first day of school and even first week of school has gone really well. We had a lot of smiling faces on the first day of school. We had quite a few returning students, so they knew the routine, they knew the procedures. And all our new students kind of just fell in with it and followed the routine. So, it was a really great day. It was nice for myself to see the students again. I had been out on medical leave for the last month and a half of the school year. So, it was good for myself, myself also to get back into the routine and to see the students again. So, it was a really amazing day. The last week has been really fun. We've entered a lot of new students just in the last week from Antioch and Deer Valley. It's really good to see them ready to learn and kind of embrace the new experience that Live Oak gives to them. So, we're very fortunate to have a really small community that supports our students who quite often struggle in the bigger comprehensive high schools. We have already had our first care team meeting of the school year. We're looking forward to supporting any and all students. We are also working towards our back-to-school night, engaging more parents. So, we'll be offering some pizza and soda for them to kind of come and bring their family and enjoy the night. Everyone is welcome to come. We typically don't have the greatest of turnout, so we're hoping that this kind of encourages them to come and see the amazingness that happens at Live Oak. So, I will now turn it over to Casey.
You did steal some of my topics. Well, unlike Jimno, this is my 35th first year of teachings, so 25 of them in this district and very, very smooth beginning. I, Gianni, he's left, oh, he's there. But when he said the tradition of senior sunrise, that made me happy because I started that tradition at Dozier Libby 16 years ago at my first graduating class. But what I saw when I first got to campus during the summer assisting, getting things ready was last year we had WASC and there were several things that we had decided to put into place, some security measures, which, you know, speed bumps, better lighting, making sure that there is like reflective film on the front windows, so it's a little bit safer for the office staff. Saw that right away. All of us had signs with no phones or electronics in the classroom, which is something that the whole staff really works hard to employ, that they focus on their academics and not their electronics, which was really nice that we're all on board and everybody seems to be following along. But the- But the biggest thing I saw is that we do have a lot of new students this year, because at least half of our class graduated, you know, we have juniors and seniors, and when kids come to our school, they all have a one-on-one meeting with the, whether the principal or the counselor are going over the school expectations, how the school runs, how this is different from your traditional school setting. And that's really apparent because typically what you want to see, at least myself, is half of your class are returners and half of them are newbies, so the returners can teach the newbies how it works. And I had two periods where it was all newbies, and I was like, oh boy, you know, there's nobody there to show the ropes and show the way. And smooth, I mean, not a single solitary problem, not just in my room, but campus-wide. And that is, I think, really evident of the one-on-one meetings where they really understand that this is how it works there. So it's been an excellent beginning for my 35th year, a couple more to go, I suppose. Thank you.
And I do want to mention, I forgot, we did have quite a few students participate in the Senior Sunrise at Antioch High School, so it was really nice to be able to participate in those activities with the school that a lot of these students came from. And they do get to participate in dances and all that fun stuff at Antioch High School as well, so it was nice to be part of that as well. So, thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Williams, Board President Hernandez, and Board Trustees. My name's Leah Jones Douglas, I'm the principal at Antioch Middle School. Just want to give a quick shout-out, because my custodian is here. We had summer school on our campus this year, and so with the help of Josh and his team and MO, and our amazing custodian, we had about two weeks turnover to get our campus clean and ready for our students. So I super appreciate you guys, so thank you. So we had a great start of our, you know, school year, we appreciate you all being there, it was nice to be able to chat and for you guys to see our campus. At Antioch Middle School, we are big on relationships, and we feel like that's the key and that's the foundation. So a lot of what we did on our first day was welcoming our new Eagles and then our returning Eagles, and making sure that we are building those relationships among students, but also among staff. I'm very adamant as well that it's not something that we do just at the beginning of the year and we're done. Like, we checked that box off and we built community. No, it's something that we consistently do throughout the year, and that's really important to us. So that is something that we really focused on on the first day of school and we continue to do throughout the year. As you guys came in, you may have noticed there was star balloons everywhere. Our theme is kind of the North Star, and we got that idea from our PLC conference this summer. And really what that is about is, the North Star is our guiding focus, our mission, what are we focused on when everything gets a little bit crazy? And that's to make sure that we're ensuring that all scholars are learning at grade level or above, and we're making sure that that's not only academics, but socially, emotionally, and behaviors, and academic behavior. So we taught our, we call it the Eagle Way, and that's being kind, safe, and responsible, and being intentional about how we teach those school-wide expectations, and how we teach those skills that are help students be successful. And then we were excited, so we have, our eighth graders will be the first class this year, at the end of the year, to promote our DI program. So they will be the first middle school class that will complete that program, so we're excited to welcome those students. We're excited to build kind of our programs and offer different electives. And so one of the electives that students are very excited about, I don't know if you know, but middle schoolers and high schoolers love social media, media pictures, those things. So we brought a media class to our campus this year, and so I just want to read a couple quotes for some students. So one student said, "It hasn't been bad at all, the first few days have been cool, and this media class has been great so far." Another student said, "The first few days have been good, I'm definitely like this media class so far, I'm excited to create a yearbook." And another student said, "I definitely think the vibe has been good, I like my teachers." And then big thumbs up for the media class so far. So in addition to bringing some programs, building programs, we have a very high multilingual population, and like Dr. Cruz said, we believe that that is a superpower. And so we offer a class called Avid Excel that has students kind of access avid instruction and get to do class visits, field trips, different activities, just like our avid classes. And so I actually have a student who I'm very proud of for being here, I know she's nervous, but we appreciate you here, especially on a school night. And then our teacher who also teaches our Avid Excel.
Hi, I'm Ashley, I'm an Avid Excel student this year, and right now we are focusing on how we organize our binders and how we move groups, how we move students into groups in a whole wide class. And I really enjoy my class because they are fun, they are energetic, they are supportive in any moment, sorry. And I really do appreciate my teacher, Ms. Manning, and she's really nice, and she's very kind, and yeah. And I think this year would help me reclassify for ELD and trying to hope if maybe this year I can get out of ELD so I can do orchestra. And yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, hi, I'm Melody Manning, I teach the Avid Excel class. As you know, we, Antioch Middle has the highest percentage of multilingual students, we're at 31.2%. So while it's stressed, because we have only two teachers, we are very excited to have Avid Excel, because not only are the students able to learn their new language skills and practice amongst themselves, but they're also learning college and career skills that they can take with them beyond an ELD class. And the main thing with Avid Excel is that they get into groups and they use their peers to practice speaking and becoming more clear, and helping them decipher language, like academic vocabulary, and all of the reading that they do, and they build off of each other with it. So not only are we trying to get our three fours to, sorry, reclassify, we're trying to also teach them how to be organized and how to continue in life successfully and do what they want to do. So yay, exciting year.
So I wanted to thank each and every one of you, our scholars, our fantastic administrators, our parents, our community members, and our staff. We could not have done this without each and every one of you, to our custodians, we are so grateful, because we know that we would not have had the kind of start that we've had without you. So thank you so much. I always say thank you for your sacrifice, thank you for your commitment, we know that this is a position, but it's also a love, so thank you so much. So here's to a unified start, we are one, one voice, one dream, one purpose, we are Antioch Unified School District. Thank you.
Great, moving on to six public comments, we have Item A, Individuals to Address the Board Regarding Items Not on the Agenda from the Public. First, we have Velma Wilson.
Wow, I don't know how to follow all that presentation, that's a new, that's a first. And I've been in Antioch Unified for a very long time as a parent volunteer, and it's amazing to see the growth and the change. That's what's important, because yes, we are one, AUSD. And I'm always and forever loud, proud, AUSD. I am Velma Wilson. Good evening to the Board President, to the entire board, and to our Antioch Unified Community, to our parents, families, and to the community at large. I am super honored to be an alumni, devoted parent volunteer, that I've served this district faithfully. Over the years that my children were in elementary, middle, high school, now college, and still coming back to serve in this community, consistent supporter of parent involvement and engagement in our district. I served faithfully, and I'm gonna say that faithfully as a volunteer, and then in latter years becoming, having a small vendor contract as a parent and student engagement liaison. I am currently the President and Chair of the CAC for SELPA, the first Vice President of the East County branch of the NACP, Vice President of the Antioch Schools Education Foundation, and so much more. As we embark on the 2025-26 school year, I really want to offer a heartfelt congratulations for a nice kickstart. As you, some of you may notice, I don't have my cane, and that's because God has been faithful to me. I have lost 74 pounds, trying to get healthier, preparing for this surgery that I need to have, I've been pushing off, but I still stand here proud. As a former parent of some amazing students, first, congratulations to our new Superintendent, Dr. Darnice Williams. While I have not yet had the pleasure of formally meeting you, I look forward to the moment we can actually collaborate side by side. I am confident that your leadership will continue to elevate our schools, support our teachers, and empower our families to be full partners in their children's education. That's what I did, raising my children when I couldn't even walk. Our district is thriving because of the steady faithful efforts of the families, educators, and staff who show up every day with shared goal of student success. I have had the privilege of serving as a parent volunteer over the years, as I mentioned earlier, and I firsthand know how meaningful engagement transforms classrooms, school communities, and outcomes for our students. The time is now to celebrate the wonderful consistent things happening across AUSD, dedicated to teachers who innovate in the classroom, you heard that, administrators who listen and respond, you heard that too, and parent and community allies who bring resources, energy, and hope to our schools. Equity and inclusion remain at the center of our work. Is that my time, for real?
Yeah, that is unfortunate time.
I will just say, congratulations to a start of a new school year.
Thank you. Next, we have Six B, Individuals to Address the Board Regarding Items Not on the Agenda from District Employees. The first up is Louis Sandoval.
Good evening, President Hernandez, Board Trustees, and Superintendent Dr. Williams. My name is Louis Sandoval, and I am the, excuse me, second Vice President of the Antioch Chapter, CSCA. And I'm here to convey a message from our President, Brian Atkinson, who was not able to make it here this evening, and if you're watching, I wish you a speedy recovery. Good evening, President Hernandez, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Williams, District Leaders, and guests. On behalf of CSCA, I'd like to extend a warm welcome back from summer break. We hope you all had a restful and well-earned break from the busy school year. We are pleased to welcome Dr. Darnice Williams. As our new Superintendent, CSCA truly enjoyed working with Dr. Williams so far, and looks forward to continuing to build a strong and positive partnership. Her message of unity, "We are one, one vision, one purpose, one dream," resonates deeply with our values, and we are excited to support this vision throughout the year. We also extend a warm welcome to Dr. Camille Johnson, our new Associate Superintendent of Human Resources. We look forward to meeting with her next week and partnering to support and uplift AUSD staff through fair and thoughtful engagement. We'd also like to take a moment to welcome back all AUSD staff, our dedicated classified employees, passionate teachers, and committed administrators. Each of you plays a vital role in the success of our students and schools, and we're grateful for your continued service and support. As we begin the new school year, we want to take a moment to recognize and thank our classified staff. Their dedication and hard work over the summer months ensured our campuses were ready to welcome students and staff. Through the summers seems to get shorter, their commitment never wavers, they continue to amaze us with their ability to deliver under pressure. Indeed, I can speak firsthand about that. CSCA is enthusiastic about the year ahead. With new leadership and shared commitment to unity and excellence, we are confident that together we can make this a successful and inspiring school year for students, staff, and the community. Thank you for your time and continued partnership.
Thank you. Next, we have Melissa Holmes-Villavong.
Good evening, members of the board, our new Superintendent. My name is Melissa Holmes-Villavong, I'm a proud education specialist at Turner Elementary. I wanted to bring up a very specific concern about perhaps the district's new policy with classroom budgets. I'm very concerned that I learned at the beginning of the school year that the general education teachers would be receiving a budget of $350, and then I found out that special education would get only $150. So I raised this concern about how that felt unfair and inequitable, and then the following week, all the teachers had all their money taken away, and now there's only like one classroom supply closet for the whole school, which doesn't meet the needs of our diverse learners. I'm very concerned as to why the district would do this, when we're trying to do our best to support the district's new initiative and goals that in Dr. Louise Cruz's words, that all students means, all means all, all students including our special education students. So again, I'm just concerned what the purpose behind this policy is, is there budget cuts that we're not aware of? And how does this benefit our students by stripping away the autonomy of a teacher, deciding what each individual student needs to be able to meet this incredibly high standard of all students being at grade level or higher? So I urge you to revisit and reconsider this policy to ensure equity for our very deserving students, and allowing our professional educators to make the educated decisions on what best fits their classroom needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Freitas.
Good evening, my name's Amanda Freitas, I am a kindergarten teacher at Fremont Elementary. One of the things I've come before the board many a times about is special education. The Child Fine Mandate of Special Education Law, Section 300.111, says that school districts have a duty to locate, evaluate, and potentially serve any infant, toddler, or school-age student impacted by disability. And my question is, what is our district doing to find students before they reach our classroom? Before the school year started this year, I had two parents of students who were placed into my class contact the district, both the office, the sped department, many phone calls before the first day of school. They submitted documentation of their disability, they submitted observations, and they said that their students needed support and did not belong in a general education classroom. I reached out after reading through the documentation that they submitted, and I asked for help for the first day of school if we were gonna place them into general education. I reached out to special education, I reached out to the Director of Educational Services, and I was basically just told no, like, kind of like I was overreacting that it couldn't be that bad. But when these students stepped into the classroom for orientation with their parents, it was very clear that they were gonna need support to be in the classroom. Luckily, the first day of school, we were able to get one moved over very quickly over into one of our SDC classes. It took several more days, even with me submitting documentation of how the student was behaving in the classroom and how I did not feel that I, as the only adult in the classroom, was gonna be able to keep them, as well as the rest of my classroom, safe, I was kind of just brushed off. So I feel like we're failing these families, we're not reaching them, we're making them go through this long, laborious process, it takes almost a year with all of the things that we have to do. And the two students in my class, we're not the only two, we had a student in first grade who had never been in school before special needs, a fourth grader, never been in school before special needs. So we're really failing at finding these families. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I've brought up multiple times, is technology, printing. Us as teachers, we have so much stress already in the classroom, you know, just meeting the diverse needs of our students, they come in with many different needs, we should not have to stress about being able to print the materials we need for our class. We have never before been limited on how many copies we can make. I shouldn't be thinking, oh, should I print this at home so I don't run out of copies here? And then if you want us to use Print Shop, I just finished my first six-week cycle plan with my team, yesterday was our first opportunity to meet, I went to go see if I could submit a Print Shop order for our first round of math, the soonest I can get Print Shop back is September 29th. That's two weeks after my first six-week cycle plan. So if we want all of our scholars to learn at grade level or above, we need to be able to provide the resources to teach them the material. Thank you.
Next, we have Ken Kent.
Thank you, good evening, Dr. Williams, Board Trustees.
Good evening, Dr. Williams, Board Trustees. I'm a 25-year veteran teacher here in Antioch. Every year, I fall more in love with my students and their families, and it's for them that I continue to speak out. We've had a large immigrant community in Antioch, and during the last six months, they're increasingly under attack. I ask, what has AUSD done to protect students and families from the threat of immigration? Have we implemented ongoing efforts to inform them on how to defend their rights? Have we participated with other organizations who do this work, who are taking a stand? Have we reached out to other local school districts to form a united front? Do principals at every school have a procedure to follow when ICE is in the community? Have they practiced this emergency with their staff? To each of these questions, I have to answer, no. We haven't done anything. I know that we worry that taking public action, that being vocal for the rights of immigrants could draw attention to our community for federal agencies, and they rely on that fear to remain unchallenged. While we quietly treat each day as business as usual, perhaps calmly lamenting the nation's tragedies through social media, our families live with the reality of being targeted by this fascist, racist, cruel administration. Attacks on immigrants, LGBTQ+, on our BIPOC communities happen every day. Elementary Back to School Night is tomorrow, one of the best times to contact large numbers of our families. On this topic, for theirs and their children's safety, we have nothing to say. Don't let this pass for middle and high school back-to-school nights either. We need more than vague platitudes. We need a plan. It needs to be clear, explicit, and shared, and then implemented. Because it's coming for us. It won't stop with bigger cities, more vocal pieces. Don't be silent. I thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to district reports, there are none. And moving on to Item 8 Hearings, we have one Item A, the California School Employees' Association and its Chapter 85 Initial Proposal to Antioch Unified School District for the 2025-2026 School Year. I'll turn it over to Ms. Wells.
So yes, good evening, Board and Dr. Williams. Government Code 3547 requires that all initial proposals of exclusive representatives and of public school employers which relate to matters within the scope of representation shall be presented at a public meeting. What you have before you this evening in preparation for upcoming negotiations and in accordance with the Government Code, Section 3547, is our California School Employees' Association and its Chapter 85 publicly presenting its initial proposal to the Antioch Unified School District for 2526. This hearing encourages presentation, I'm sorry, participation by parents, staff, and members of the community, and bargaining unit leaders regarding issues related to the successor contract.
All right, so I'll start off by opening up the hearing, and then, do we have any public comments on that? And any questions from our trustees? Then I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Great. And moving on to Item 9, Public Presentations, there are none. 10 Consent Items, we have Items A through AB. Are there any items that trustees would like to comment or ask questions on or pull for a separate vote? If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
I make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve Consent Items A through AB as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to Item 11, Action Items, we have one Item A, Employment Agreement, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you. It is indeed a pleasure to introduce our finalists for the position of Associate Superintendent for HR, Human Resources, and it is a recommendation of the board to accept and consider the approval of her contract. And it's Dr. Camille Johnson.
Great. Do, since we have questions before we vote on this item? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the employment agreement as presented.
I make a motion to approve the employment agreement as presented.
A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the employment agreement, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources with Dr. Camille Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Great, congratulations and welcome, Dr. Johnson. I'll give you an up, would you like to say a few words, or? Not to put you on the spot, but, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Dr. Williams, Board President Hernandez, and members of the board and cabinet, I am overwhelmed with joy, appreciation, and just, I'm usually not at a loss of words, but I have never walked into a building and been greeted with such love and kindness by the community of Antioch. And to hear the stories that I heard this evening, my goodness, what a wonderful place I am coming to. I thank you so much for having me be a part of this community. I look forward to serving the students and the staff and making this or continuing to make this a great place to be. I am truly, truly impressed by being here this evening and the things that I have heard. Thank you for welcoming me, and I'm very excited to get started.
Thank you, and welcome to Antioch Unified School District. Next, under Items for Information, Discussion, and Action by Board, we have none. Under Resolutions for First Reading, we have none. Under Resolutions for Immediate Action, we have Item A, Resolution 2025-2623, Authorizing Provisional Internship Permit. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Wells.
Yes, thank you. So this is our standard action item for our PIPS, or Provisional Internship Permits. As you're aware, the State of California Commission on Teaching Credentialing does grant districts the ability to employ individuals who are in the process of meeting subject matter competency requirements needed for their internship program. So we are requesting that the individuals that you see on this resolution tonight be approved for that provisional internship permit.
Great, unless there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution as presented.
I approve, sorry. It's hard to see.
Yeah, so motioned, is there a second?
A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2025-2623, Authorizing Provisional Internship Permit. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to B, Resolution 2025-2624, Authorizing Instructors to Teach Outside of Credential Authorization for the 2025-26 School Year. I'll turn it back over to Ms. Wells.
Yes, so this resolution is requesting the attached single-subject credential holders in the district to teach outside of their credential authorizations based upon relevant provisions in the California Educational Code. Although we do make every effort to assign teachers appropriately, there are some unique teaching assignments listed here in the attachment for these teachers which are not covered under particular credential authorization. So approval of this resolution permits these employees listed to teach allowable class subject specifically during the 2526 school year. All of these teachers are serving in full-time positions with a full credential. However, they do need an additional credential authorization to teach these classes on special assignment for a portion of their teaching assignment for this school year.
Great, unless there's any questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I move to approve. A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the Resolution 2025-2624, Authorizing Instructors to Teach Outside of Credential Authorization for the 2025-26 School Year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to 15 Resolutions for Second Reading and Action, there are none. Under 16, Board Policies for First Reading, there are none. 17, Board Policies for Second Reading Action, none. 18, Information Items for General Information, there are none. Moving on to 19, Future Agenda Items from Board Members, do any of my colleagues have future agenda items to bring up?
I do.
Yeah, Trustee Kobo Smith.
So I was recently at a conference where other board members were sharing that they were able to become more fiscally sound with some clean energy policies, and so I was, I wanted to bring forward an agenda item to have the facilities master plan reviewed, and if we could be, if they could share with the board what our facilities master's plan entails as far as clean energy and what each individual school site is doing to comply with that directive in the facilities master plan.
Do we have enough, do you have consensus from at least a few more board members to make sure that that's something that we all want to talk about?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then, do you have enough direction on that, Dr. Williams, to agendize that?
I do.
Great, great. Any other items from board members? Yeah, trustee Lathan.
This is a beautiful segue from trustee Smith. We have several parcels of pieces of land, and, you know, sometimes it'll come up like we were leasing land to businesses, or like we passed one today, approved one today in terms of like an organization that uses it for cattle grazing and all of that. So I think it would be helpful for me at least to know where these parcels are. And so that kind of piggybacks off of what trustee Smith said, because that is part of our facilities, right? And so it would be nice if we could have more information, not just a map, because I've seen some parts of a map, like in the contract today, but actual physically seeing it, where is it, how is it being kept up, and those type things, because that is our responsibility. So that's what I'm hoping to add to that request for the facilities as well.
And are trustees in general agreements wanting to hear about that?
Yeah, and if you could add in there like how the property is currently being utilized, that would be helpful.
Great. Any other agenda items?
Yes.
Yes, trustee Brown.
A couple of meetings ago, and forgive me if I forgot the name, there was a group of students who came and they were talking about recycling, and we had a map. I would love to, I thought about them a couple of weeks ago, and I would love to see if they can come back and give us an update on how things are going, especially with climate change and all that other stuff. So, yeah, it was something I just, just wanted to hear back, because a lot of times we can't speak when people are coming to the podium to talk, and then the follow-up part is always what I'm interested in, having those guests come back and speak on how's it going.
Are you talking about the Earth Team?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Earth Team, that's what it is.
Yeah, so maybe Dr. Williams can reach out to the Earth Team and see what would be a good time to have them come back.
I do have one other item. What the teacher brought up today has been forefront of my mind as well, and I actually have been in connection with some people in the community regarding how to keep our families safe from risk of deportation and just even the perceived threat of such issues. So I know that we have done resolutions saying that we are a safe haven district, however, we didn't provide much direction, and that was also prior to Dr. Williams being on the board. And so I don't know if this is necessarily an agenda item that I'm asking for, but I definitely would like a discussion on how to provide more direction to Dr. Williams to make sure that gets filtered through the schools.
Great, so maybe that could be a discussion item than I think it maybe sounds like, or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure how I would agendize that, or if that's like a study session, or, like, maybe you could even help me, Dr. Williams.
So staff is in the process of working and looking at our resources from last year, and so perhaps we can bring it back as a presentation and an update for the board.
Oh, that'd be wonderful. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, and everyone's in agreement with bringing that forward?
Yes.
Great. Any other agenda items? Great, moving on to 20 Additional Comments Which Exceeded The First 30-Minute Session Limit, I believe we don't have any. 21 Reports and Comments From Board Members, so we have Item A, which includes committee updates and other reports and comments that board trustees have. And so maybe we can start with trustee Lathan.
Yes. The Magic School Bus Tour was super, super fun to get to see the students and families, staff, and so I just wanted to thank you again for putting that together and for your staff who also supported in making that day successful. And I look forward to this coming Friday and next Friday as well to go on those visits. I did want to comment that the NAACP East County Youth are hosting a gala, and I know a couple of years ago, if it wasn't last year, a few board members attended, and so I'm hoping that we will attend this year. If not everyone can come, that's, you know, that's understandable, but even if a few of us come to represent, that one of the students I spoke today from, he's in the back, from Doja Libby participates with the NAACP East County Youth Chapter. And we have several students in our district who are active in the branch, and so I just wanted to make where the chapter, so I want to make sure that we are, we are supporting our students in their leadership. And the tickets are $100 per person. I'm not sure what the budget is like and if we can maybe pay for a few students to go, if there's a charge, and I could use my budget for my PD if that's allowable, but just throwing that out there, because that is a lot for some families. So anyway, it's on September 13th, a Saturday, 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock PM.
Trustee Kobo Smith.
Could you get us a flyer? Can we get a flyer for that? I would also like to reiterate how wonderful the Magic School Bus was, even though I even spoke to a community member who suggested using the Magic School Bus for your listening tour and going directly into communities, neighborhoods. So I thought that was a really good idea. We'll discuss more when we talk about Area 4's listening sessions. I just want to say, I just really am overwhelmed with the positive energy going into this new year, and just heartfelt thank you to Dr. Williams for creating that energy.
Well, I missed my ride for the bus. No, seriously, I'm sorry. I just love to laugh. I think laughter is really good. So my daughter, first day of school, she was a kinder, so I couldn't get back those memories, but I do have a ticket to be on the bus this Friday and next Friday, and I'm looking forward to that. I also want to say for our, for Dr. Williams, we did have our meet and greet, and I encourage families to come. Never judge a book by its cover. We had an opportunity for our community to come out and ask questions and talk. She's very approachable, and so I just think that, I think it's tell one, reach one, send one, and so therefore, we're going to have it again. They're working all those details out, and I just want to encourage the community to come out. I'm encouraging not just the community, but our students as well, because she's here for them as well. And so I brought my daughter, and we looked around the room, and I was like, where are the rest of the kids at? So, but we just wanted to encourage everyone to come out and be there. Also, just being able to experience her as a kinder going there and the energy at Lone Tree Elementary, you would think you were at a banquet. The balloons, the arch, the backdrops, the teachers, the excitement, it was really, really good to see. And trustee Smith, you would be honored and pleased that our special ed department at Lone Tree Elementary, if you guys are watching or listening, or any teachers, you guys had it spot on, and it was like they rolled out the red carpet for our babies, and it just moved me. I forgot, I wasn't there as a board member, I was there as a parent, and I was just like almost in tears, because every parent came through that door questioning, like, is my baby safe, right? And there was safety all around, and the principals, and just, it was just a good vibe for the school. for the school, and I just want to say, like, echo what Trustee Oka said, it is very good to know that we're starting off a new school year. This is my first time starting off in the school year, and when I was elected, I came towards the end of the year, so half of the school year. But my first start, I was like, whoa, this is a roller coaster for real, but it's so much joy, and so I'm excited. If you're not excited, I advise you to get excited, because it's going to be a lot of good things happening, and I just want to say thank you, Dr. Williams, for your perseverance, your commitment, your dedication, and being unwavering, and just continue to go. You have someone here, you have the Cabinet here, you have all of us here to support you, okay? That's all.
Yeah, it's been just such an amazing start to the school year, and I think it's such a testament to our community, both our staff, our parents, our students, to show that we were able to really hit this very important, I think, tone and set of values that is really reflective of our community, that shows how positive and how much joy we have about our school district, without ignoring that we have some very real challenges and opportunities to grow. And that's really, I think, exactly where we want to be as a community, ensuring that we're having fun, but also making schools a better and more enjoyable experience, and so, you know, that, that really is thank you to everyone for making that possible, and for making that the culture of this school district. And then let me just say that, yeah, the Magic School Bus Tour was an extremely fun time. We knew that Dr. Williams was great, but let me tell you that it's a much different experience to actually see her work and see her interacting with students, and getting staff, students, and community members going and excited about the school year, so definitely look out for her as she's stopping by the different school sites, and see her really interacting with people. It really was such a joy to see the way that she lit up, and then in turn, lit up our students and staff. So with that, we'll move to closing here. Our, and I do owe you all a book that I did not bring this time, I usually bring a book to share at the end, but I'm coming straight from the hospital after finishing an on-call shift. So our future meetings are on August 27th and September 10th. And then lastly, 20, item 23, adjournment, so unless there's anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to approve.
Great, so it's a motion, is there a?
I wanted to say something in the back, too, honey, the student.
What was that?
The student wanted to say something in the back.
Sure, yeah, as long as the Board is. Of course, I've had the raising hands, but. I just wanted to say, again, I wanted to extend, I mentioned earlier, but I really do want to, because after I spoke, I really did hear a lot of really insightful things from a lot of the educators here, and so really seeing the lengths that a lot of the educators in our community will go to, you know, to advocate for their students is really exceptional, right? Even those with dissent, even those with disagreements, they advocate for their students civilly, you know, they, they really go the extra mile, so I really want to shout out those educators. My school has great educators, our principal, Mr. Wilkins, he's a great guy, Ms. Olir, our health teacher, she's wonderful, Mr. Anthony, our APUS history teacher, all these teachers, and all these teachers here, educators really do have a conviction here that I've seen, and besides their conviction, their desire to advocate for the students, seeing a Board itself that's this receptive to hearing these concerns, and to allowing these voices to be heard, and actually taking actionable steps, is really refreshing, and it's great to see. That's actually motivated me, and then also, the aspect of really just listening for youth and youth feedback has also been incredible. Dr. Williams, I really appreciate your event with NAACP, you know, allowing the community to get to know you, that was incredible, and that's a step that a lot of other superintendents likely don't, you know, take. Also, your new recent motion, or recent project of allowing student Board members, it's incredible, I applied myself, because this is just, it's such an incredible opportunity, and, and no, and hearing this many opportunities, so I hope to join you, you know, as soon as a colleague, but.
All right.
But I, I just wanted, I just wanted to say, thank you for all your, your real, like, your motivation, you guys are so motivated to do this, this community is so motivated, and allowing opportunities like this is so incredible. I'm thrilled to have a Board like you, like you guys, and I'm thrilled to have these opportunities. Antioch has been, you know, I moved from Oakland originally, and then Antioch has been certainly an unprecedented change, but educated, educators like you guys and Board members have really, your policies, your decisions, and your, I think you're really, your conviction as well, and your orientation towards making lives better for students is really, is really refreshing, great to hear. I also wanted to say that, I did, you know, hear you mention your Magic School Bus Tour. I know Doja Libby wasn't on your, your list thus far, and I believe the 15th is when you'll be visiting, so.
No, yeah, we did.
Oh, you did? Huh? No, at Doja?
Yeah.
No, that was the senior sunrise.
No, that's what you were talking about.
No, the principal, yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, if you guys go again, you need a tour guide, you know, let me know. But no, I just wanted to say thank you again, and reiterate to, you know, to all the educators here, this has been a great opportunity, this engagement has been wonderful, and yes, we do have a flyer, I will, you know, get it out to you. I also want to give, you know, a very special shout out to Natalia Cortez, she had, she has really good announcements at our school, I can appreciate those, and, yeah, thank you guys so much, this has been a great experience, and continue doing the work you do, and community, continue advocating like you do. Thank you so much, have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come warm your future seat up here. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Great, is there a second? Since we're properly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no, motion passes.